Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 26, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals here at Ashland Town Hall, second floor in the Select Board Hearing Room. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform for convenience only. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. However, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue to be broadcast on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. And to participate remotely from a computer, there's a link to the Zoom platform on our agenda. And there is also a telephone number for you to dial in. First order of business this evening at 7:00 is calling the meeting to order, taking a roll call of board members. I, John Trefeathen, am present.
I, Brian Forrestall, am present.
I, Stuart Siegel, am present on Zoom.
I, Ryan Sullivan, am present on Zoom.
Excellent. And just for clarification, Mr. Forrestall, Brian Forrestall is also present via Zoom. We have several matters that have last-minute requests to continue. The first is a public hearing involving a comprehensive permit, 40B request for 55 West Union Street. The applicant and its representatives was unable to be here this evening. They very graciously allowed an extension of time for us to open the hearing tonight within the applicable period that we were required to. However, the matter will be the subject of a motion to continue until our next meeting. I will read the notice as published in the Metro West Daily News. The petition is from 55 West Union LLC requesting a comprehensive permit per MGL Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to allow for the development of one four-story elevator building, offering a total of 116 rental units, including 87 units priced at market and 29 units income restricted in perpetuity to households earning at or below 80% of area median income on 4.9 acres. The property in question is located at 55 West Union Street, Assessors Map 19, Lot 62, in the Ashland Commercial Highway District. As I had indicated, we will open the hearing now and the chair will entertain a motion to continue the hearing to our next meeting, which is on September 9. Would someone care to make that motion?
Still moved.
I second that motion.
Thank you. I, John Trefeathen, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. Then we are concluded with that. Moving on to the next item, a public hearing involving a special permit request for 17 Central Street in Ashland. Is anyone present via Zoom for the applicant? Don't all speak at once. Okay, the chair is going to table this matter and move on to the next item, which is a continuance of a public hearing on a 40B comprehensive permit request for 61 Waverly Street. This had been the subject of multiple hearings and we received, the last minute, a request for the applicant due to the fact that to continue the matter to our next hearing because the supplemental report that we were awaiting from the town's Water and Sewer Peer Reviewer had not been received as yet. And we were also awaiting a further consultation on an architect expert. That being said, they asked that the matter be continued to next meeting, September 9. Recognizing the fact that our town council was unable to be present tonight, it would behoove us to continue the matter to September 9. So the chair would entertain a motion to continue the hearing on 61 Waverly Street to September 9, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Thank you both. Is there a second? I will take one of those as a second. I, John Trefeathen, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Thank you very much. And moving on to item number five in our matter. And, gentlemen, just so you know, the matter was continued. Okay. A public hearing on 30 Memorial Drive, a variance request, and I will read the notice as published in the Metro West Daily News. The petition is from Metro West Young Men's Christian Association, Incorporated. Pursuant to Section 9.2.2.2, the applicant requests a variance for relief from Section 10.0 of the zoning bylaws to construct 262 parking spaces, including eight handicap spaces, at the dimension of nine by 18 feet. The property in question is located at 30 Memorial Drive, Assessors Map 13, Lot 178, and located in the rail transit district, more specifically RTD-C and RTD-D. And that being said, do we have someone from the applicant to make their presentation?
Good evening. My name is Rick McPherson. I'm president and CEO of the Metro West YMCA. Pleasure to be here tonight. And are you able to move my slide forward? Oh, I got it. I think I've got one set. So from a high level, again, I'd like to remind folks that Metro West YMCA has been working with the community here to bring a new full-service facility YMCA to the town of Ashland to serve the entire region. At this facility, you can imagine everything that will happen in this YMCA is going to be of tremendous benefit to our communities. There'll be health and wellness programs for people of all ages. We'll have aquatic programs to teach kids valuable swimming lessons and have all sorts of great activities in that swimming pool. There'll be a gymnasium. There'll be a track. There's great space for teenagers in this new facility. And I just want to report to the town that we are making tremendous progress, slowly but surely. Step by step, we're getting closer and closer to having all the planning done for this project. And so we welcome the opportunity tonight to talk to you a bit about parking spaces. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt from Fletcher Tilton.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton. On behalf of the applicant, we also have Andy Platt here from Bowler, if he should be needed, as well as some other core team members virtually joining this meeting. Just to give a little bit of background on the project as a whole, and then we'll get specifically into the parking. But the YMCA is seeking to develop the property at 30 Memorial Drive, which would include just under 62,000 square-foot membership building, a 9,500-square-foot learning center, and the associated parking spaces, which we'll discuss tonight. The membership building will include an aquatic center, gymnasium, wellness center, teaching kitchen, and meeting space. And the early learning center is expected to enroll just under 100 toddlers and preschoolers. As mentioned in the opening, this property is located in a rail transit district, specifically RTD-D and C. And the lot itself is approximately 12.55 acres. As you'll see on this parking plan, I know it might be difficult to read in the room, but this is kind of the entire site plan, I should say. We'll get into the parking plan next. But towards Plan South, down at the bottom of the page, there's two primary entries and exits, one towards the left side of the property and one towards the right side. The left side kind of funnels you into that auxiliary parking area to the left of the early learning center. And the right side brings you more in front of the main membership building. Overall, as mentioned, there are 262 parking spaces. The exits are both proposed to have stop bars and signs as well. As mentioned, the parking is kind of split up into two areas. There's approximately 61 spaces to the left, over to the left of the early learning center, with the remaining approximately 200 spaces being kind of in that central parking area, right in the bottom middle of your screen. Just to get a little bit further into the parking plan details, you can see closer now what we're proposing. We are proposing spaces to be all nine by 18. As read into the record in the opening, the bylaw, Section 10, defines a parking space as nine foot by 20 feet. However, in this case, we're seeking a variance to that nine by 20 measurement, as mentioned, to go nine by 18. We feel this meets the standard for variance and has a number of benefits that I'll talk through in greater detail as we go through this presentation. Nine by 18 spaces are typically recognized throughout the Commonwealth as being appropriate, so we don't think there's any detriment here. We'll also have a bumper overhang, so to speak, connected with the majority of the parking spaces, so they will function as essentially 20-foot-deep spaces if it should be necessary. So going through again, the zoning, specifically the requested relief, it's been read into the record. We're seeking to install nine by 18 parking spaces rather than the typical nine by 20. As the board is familiar with variance standards, you need to have a unique condition which affects the lot, a hardship, and then not causing substantial detriment. In this case, we believe we meet all that criteria. And I'll go through the reason why, jumping back actually just to the plan briefly. This site does have significant topography issues towards the back of the building. The lot drops and slopes significantly down. You can also see towards the right side of the plan, about halfway down, that line, that's the property line. So this overall property has about 10 sides. It's a very uniquely shaped lot with that jog in from the right side of the page, again, kind of in the middle of the plan, over towards the left, right behind the building, is probably the most unique property line we have. And those two factors, both the topography as well as the shape of the lot, really dictated everything on this site. It was kind of dominoes, right? We started with the lot and then topography and the shape. Then we looked at the building. And then as we moved forward with the parking and certainly making a safe and efficient parking scheme, we ended up with nine by 18 spaces. So it all really is a function of the shape of the lot as well as the topography. This does create a substantial hardship if there's a little literal enforcement of the zoning because it would throw this whole plan off kilter. It would either lead to a significant reduction of parking spaces or potentially a reconfiguration of the whole lot, which may or may not work with this parking scheme and certainly wouldn't allow for some of the benefits that this plan currently proposes. And finally, we don't believe this causes any detriment to the public good. If anything, it's allowing more parking, more patronage to the future YMCA. Our butters are kind of few and far between. And certainly, this isn't your typical height variance where we might be creating shadows on another lot. It really does not have an effect on any butters or the public good. In addition to meeting the criteria for variance, in our opinion, we believe this scheme actually provides a number of public benefits as well. It maximizes the parking and circulation on site. It allows for significantly less impervious area, which we think is a significant benefit. It also reduces the heat island effect because we'll have less impervious areas and more spaces for tree covers and plantings. It allows more residents and Y-members to use the facility safely because we're providing this increased parking in a smaller overall area. It's preventing any off-site parking, whether legal or not, to try to utilize the site if the lot were to be filled because we had less total parking spaces. And it allows for more overall green space and landscaping, especially along Memorial Drive, which creates a nice buffer zone from the street and also provides all those green features and environmental benefits that I spoke about previously. This is just, and again, hard to read, I know, but a parking plan detail page that Andy and Bowler were able to put together. It basically simulates two types of vehicles, an average 16-foot vehicle and an average 18 and 1/2-foot vehicle. And really, if you could see it more clearly, it demonstrates that there's very little overhang for even the 18 and 1/2-foot vehicles, which is your average-size truck, pickup truck, or SUV. And if there were any overhang, again, all of the walkways, all the areas in between the parking are designed to accommodate up to a two-foot overhang. So there should be no impact on any of the walkways and there should be no cars sticking out into the circulation area. There's plenty of room even on nine-by-18-foot-sized spaces for both pedestrian and vehicular safety and circulation. So with that, I'll pause and take any questions the board may have. But again, we're seeking a variance for the size of all the proposed parking spaces.
Thank you for your presentation. Our typical procedure is that we open the matter up for questions by board members or comments. And then, once that is concluded, we open it up to the public for questions or comments, either in person or anybody on Zoom. I typically start off, and usually I have comments, but I don't really have a whole lot of questions or comments. My understanding is this is also before the planning board for site plan review? Is that correct?
That is correct, for site plan review as well as design review and a few special permits relating to the building. We're also in front of the Conservation Commission as well.
And tell me a little bit more about, I know I've read your written presentation and argument, which is quite thorough and more thorough than we often get, I will say. Tell me about the angles and pinch points and how that affects, I guess, the topography and requires the 262 parking spaces. Or limits the 262.
Sure. So going back here to the parking plan detail, towards Plan Right, so if you see kind of the large shaded rectangle, that's proposed to be the membership building. And towards the back right of that is where the property line significantly jogs in from right to left. And then, as you can see, it kind of angles then back towards top of Plan Right. What we're showing, kind of unrelated and not really shaded in fully, is some potential fields. But what you don't see there is a significant drop from the back of the building. So between the drop and then the fact that the property line jogs in so significantly from right to left, that's kind of where we started with the orientation of the building. And then, as you work forward towards Memorial Drive, once you factor in all of the sidewalks, all of the need for, you know, landscaping islands between the parking spaces and keeping that buffer before Memorial Drive, that's kind of how we got into our site constraint and thought the best solution was seeking this variance, which, as mentioned, also has some environmental and overall benefits, we believe.
And is this substantially different than other land or within the same general zoning district? Does that not affect, does this affect this lot particularly?
This is very unique to this lot, just by the shape of it. Typically, you know, you have more rectangular lots. This is unlike any lot I've ever seen, being ten-sided and kind of its own little jigsaw puzzle.
Okay. I have no further questions. Going, Brian, questions? Have we lost Brian? I see Stu and Brian.
I'm back.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any questions for the applicant?
What is a standard-size parking space?
So through the chair, the standard size, I guess that's a little bit of a moving target. Typically, in Ashland, by the bylaw, the parking space is defined as nine by 20. Municipalities all have various standards. Some allow specifically for compact spaces. But certainly, many municipalities across the Commonwealth identify nine by 18 as their standard space. The average SUV or truck is only about 18 feet long, so this is well within kind of the average vehicle that we expect to see here. But in terms of average across the Commonwealth, it does vary greatly. And there are different classifications between standard and compact. And I see Dan from MDM, from our team, has his hand raised. I don't know if he wants to address this further.
Yeah. Good evening. This is Dan Dumay with MDM. Just to clarify that, yeah, the standard parking space in general for the industry is a nine by 18. And then a compact space would be approximately 16 feet in length. The reason for that is the majority of the cars in the industry today are about 16 feet long, in fact, with an 85th percentile vehicle. So it's 85% of all vehicles are about 17 feet or less. And that's the new standard for any vehicle. So a 17-foot vehicle is basically, it's a very large SUV. For comparison purposes, most people know what a Honda Pilot looks like. Those are about 16 feet in length. So we're looking for the variance for this one. We think the spaces, the nine by 18 is not only standard, but we have a full aisle width of 24 feet wide, which allows for those backing movements. The facility right next to us, the Dunkin' Donuts, does have nine by 20s. And if you go out and look at that site, you'll see that between two and four feet behind every single vehicle is just wasted space. So that's just impervious that you don't really need to make this thing operate efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, any further questions?
Yeah, I'm blipping in and out on this Wi-Fi thing. But so nine by 20 is the old standard. Nine by 18 is the new standard. And what's the YMCA looking for?
Nine by 18.
Nine by 18. Okay, thank you then.
Stu, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes. If we were to adhere to the nine by 20, how many parking spots would you lose? Or how many parking spots would you have as opposed to 262?
I'll welcome Andy from Bowler up to the mic. I don't believe we fully flushed that out, but we would certainly have to redesign the entire parking court. Yeah, that's correct. So in that case, I really don't have an answer for you. We'd have to redesign the parking field to figure that out. So I don't have an exact number for you.
You never calculated it?
No, no, we didn't.
Okay. I certainly would like an answer to that. Second question is, what other types of vehicles will you not be able to accommodate? I would imagine, for example, if we were having such a facility, some group might come in vans or buses and things of that nature. Where does your plan call for these special vehicles to park?
We actually have a specific area in front of the building for that. You can see a gap in the parking spaces to the front right of the building, the main building. You can probably see an area where there's no striping. So that area is designated for drop-offs right there.
No, I mean to park there during an event. Let's say there's an event that brings people in vans or buses. Can you accommodate them?
Yeah, the intent is for the overall space or parking field to accommodate, you know, events in general.
Where does it show it on the drawing?
Well, it's just a standard parking field. There's no special spaces for overall events. It's just every, all the spaces combined on the plan will provide adequate parking for events.
I don't think you're answering my question.
Yeah, it's a fair question. I don't know that there'd be much of a difference if it was a nine-by-20 space versus nine by 18 for those special event types of situations. We would have kind of overflow parking over to the left of the early learning center, where you can see some of the cars all kind of stacked together because it would be anticipated those special events would not be happening at the same time that the early learning center was operating, whether it's, you know, weekend or later at night, perhaps. So we don't have specifically like a 40-foot-long parking space for a bus. It would be anticipated that they would do drop-off right in front of the building. And then, depending on the situation, the type of event, you know, there could be sectioned off areas if there needed to be long-term parking or those buses would be rerouted until they were needed again to come back to the site.
I would just add that the YMCA location in Framingham has got above this many parking spaces as well. And it's just about the right number. And it's sufficient. If we were to lose any, we're going to start to feel a pinch and it's going to, it is going to, regardless of whether we lose 20 spaces, 10 spaces, or, you know, let's just say it's somewhere in that zone, that's going to be a problem. You know, less people will get into the parking lot. I'd also say at our Framingham location, we don't have anywhere that you park buses during a special event or significant-sized vehicles like that. They come with kids, they drop them off, they come in one side and they go out the other. And we make arrangements. Sometimes at that particular Y, across the street at BJ's, have worked really well with us if they want to, you know, wait during a, you know, it doesn't happen often, by the way. But when it does, it's pretty easy to, you know, with good neighbors, like the middle school across the street would be a perfect place for us to come in, drop off a group of kids. You go over to the middle school, you park. You know, they get on their phone and say, okay, we're ready to pick up. The bus goes over and picks them up. So there just really is no need. It would be a waste to create spaces for buses, that kind of a thing. So I hope that answers your question some.
A little.
Any other questions, Stu?
No.
Okay. Brian, do you have questions?
I do, yes. Just wanted to, you know, this is probably an obvious question that you probably considered, but want to double-check. In terms of the travel for emergency vehicles and the like, even assuming that there's a vehicle that might be, you know, using that two-foot buffer, is there wide enough space in between parked vehicles to get through with emergency vehicles, ambulances, fire trucks, things like that?
Yes, there is. There's a 20-foot drive aisle between all the parking spaces. I saw Dan put his hand up as well, so he can probably speak to this better than I can. But there certainly should be. This exhibit on the screen right now is meant to show a few different-sized vehicles. And you can see that they do not back up into the air, into the kind of driveway, if you want to call it that, in any space. But we do have a consistent 24-foot-wide drive aisle at all locations. So I'll turn it over to Dan if he wants to jump in as well.
Yeah, so even if you had the atypical vehicle, that would be a very, very large vehicle, 20 feet long, with no overhang of any of the grass areas or that little median in the middle. You would still, if a car was back-to-back, you'd still have 20 feet, which is the clearance for the fire, so that would be adequate. And then, there's no parking really on the corner, so those are wide open.
Great, thank you for that. And then, my second question, I guess, relates to other scenarios for apportioning out this parking. Was it considered to have a compact car parking area as a way to potentially gain the 20-foot requirement? Or would that not have impacted it? I'm sorry.
Just to clarify the question, are you saying do some spaces even smaller than the nine by 18?
Well, yeah. Yeah, like if a portion of it was, you know, for compact cars so that you could maybe gain a couple feet there in terms of the length, was that considered as a possible alternative to having everything at the 18-foot reduced size?
I guess with the idea of having all nine-by-18 spaces in the first place and being slightly deficient of what the bylaw called for, I don't think we wanted to go much further. And based on the design, if we were to have some 16-foot spaces, I don't think, you know, we had the parking kind of all lined up. So I don't think having a few 16-foot-deep spaces would really change the equation of the maneuverability much. So I think, we just thought this was the most efficient and was, you know... So I think, we just thought this was the most efficient and was, you know, fairly close to what's required for the bylaw.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ryan?
Nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
Any further questions from any other member of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Are there any facilities within the town of Ashland that do not have the nine by twenty? Or can we ask that in the next meeting, have an answer to that?
I believe Dan has his hand up again if we could, if he can unmute.
I was looking around. There are several. One of them, example, is right at the Town Hall. Those are, they're angled spaces, but they're equivalent of nine by eighteens at the rear lot of the Town Hall.
I see. Thank you, sir.
As far as any others, I, off the top of my head, don't have the answer. Whether the Planning Board would have the answer, the Planning Department perhaps would have some records, although... No, if they had, if they, good point.
Unless they were constructed prior to the bylaw being in existence, anything that was less than nine by twenty would have needed a variance to be constructed, so you would have been aware.
So I guess we don't have an answer to that question, Stu, other than as Mr. Demoy indicated, the parking lot in back of Town Hall is...
And just looking at the thing, the ice cream shop across the street, those are also nine by eighteens, but I don't know the timeframe or if they got variances. I couldn't tell you that.
Okay, that... That came into existence when I was on the, have been on the board, and I don't recall there being, that coming before us at all for a variance request.
I don't have any on record for that address.
Anything else, Stu?
No, sir.
Okay. At this point, let's open it up to public comment. If you're here in person, we do have one person here if they wanted to comment. Nope, he's shaking his head no. He's a regular, and he knows very well the drill about lining up along the side of the wall, so he won't. If you're on Zoom and wish to ask a question or be heard, please raise your hand. And our town planner and economic development director, Jasmine Fornacci, who once again I have neglected to introduce at the start of the meeting, will let you in.
I only have Mark DeSoney right now.
Okay. Mr. DeSoney, please identify yourself and your address and speak your mind.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mark DeSoney, one nineteen Main Street. And it's just one standard question for a parking lot. How much are the, how many in the parking, two hundred and sixty-two spaces, how many of them are ADA applying?
Eight of the spaces.
How I'm looking, because what I'm looking at is different colored squares and in different areas, green, the blue, the reds, and what's in front of the buildings is gray and stuff like that. I was just wondering what those are.
Sure. So those are just various sized vehicles to demonstrate that different types of vehicles can park in nine by eighteen spaces, either with a slight overhang in the front and not have any effect on the drive aisle or the walkways. So the colored vehicles, the red, the green, the blue, don't relate to ADA at all. That's just different size, kind of your standard sedan and your standard pickup truck or SUV.
And again, what's the ADA number for the parking lot?
There are eight total. If you look at the plan on the screen, there's six right out in front of the membership building, and then there's two off to the left, which would provide direct access to the Early Learning Center.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mark? Okay. There's no other public comment. Why don't we close that for this evening? And members of the board, how would you like to proceed on this matter? We've had the, I know there were some questions asked of the applicant that, about number of parking spaces if things were sort of redesigned. Stu, you had asked a question about parking of buses, et cetera. Normally, we enter into discussions immediately, but I would like to think about some of the questions that have been asked and some of the responses and see where we might want to go. What would you folks think about that, fellow board members? Be continuing this to our next meeting and have them come back and we can then finalize what our discussion and decision would be.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Stu and Ryan, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would like to take, ask within the town several questions, and I think next week or the next meeting would be fine to have a decision.
Excellent. And Ryan?
Yeah, folks still have some questions they want answered, and I think it makes sense to hold it over to a second meeting.
And having heard that discussion about coming back on September ninth, if you're available, if not, we'll work out another, our date after next meeting after that is September twenty-third, but I'd like to move this along for you folks if possible.
Yeah, we're certainly amenable to the board's suggestion. We'd like to get back as soon as possible. Just for the record, I think the only questions that we didn't answer were the reduction of parking if we weren't granted the variance, which is a bit of a challenging question, because it reconfigures everything. The drainage, the landscaping, the trees, so it's not as easy as saying it's, you know, five less spaces. But we can certainly take a look at that, but I don't know how much clearer the answer gets without redrawing the whole project. And then other examples of nine by eighteen, whether it's pre-code or other than Town Hall and the ice cream. Just to be clear, I don't want to come back in two weeks and have open-ended questions. What's...
No, those are what we seem to be focusing on with the questions that were asked and weren't answered specificity tonight. I think that would be helpful for us to find a little bit more information from the town about what the town has less than that. I know in looking at the ten-foot or the ten, the ten-point-zero section of chapter two eighty-two, I didn't know when the nine by twenty parking space was enacted. That may help guide us a little bit, if it was longstanding or if it's relatively, relatively new. And there are a number of other developments pending before the town, and I'd like to have the opportunity to look at those to see what their requirements are and what they've based it on, so that we at least have some consistency with what we're doing. But also recognizing that your spot is somewhat unique as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's helpful. I do know that the trend is to have smaller parking spaces and less parking, so I'd be surprised if it was relatively...
I heard Mr. Dumey testify. He's been sitting at this table and testifying as a peer reviewer on one or two of our matters that we've had in the last couple of years. So he's well-recognized by the members of the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Stu.
I think one question that quickly comes to mind if we can get an answer. What happens at the various school locations in our town? What size are those parking lots? I think that would give us some good insight. Like at the high school, the Fruit Street School, you know, just as a comparison.
Let's, in the interim, let's work on getting that information, and we will share it with you when we get it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stu. And we'll go from there. Someone wished to make a motion to continue the hearing to our next meeting Tuesday, September ninth at seven PM.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Very good. Then this matter is continued to our next meeting, September ninth at seven PM. Thank you very much for your presentation this evening, and we will be in touch.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board.
Okay, let me, let me go back to item number three on our list, which was a public hearing involving Seventeen Central Street and a special permit request. When we called the matter shortly after seven PM, nobody answered as being representing or appearing on behalf of the applicant. Is there anyone here via Zoom representing the applicant at this point? If so, please raise your hand so that Jasmine can recognize you. Okay. Well, rather than continuing to call it, gentlemen, I would suggest we continue this matter till our next meeting, and in the meantime, ask the Planning Department to contact them to find out do they intend to prosecute this matter or not. You'll recall that months ago, they filed, but filed seeking a variance, and it should have been a special permit, and thus they came back with this. But is there a motion to continue the matter to September ninth at seven PM? What are your thoughts, I should say, I guess?
I think that makes sense, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there a motion to continue it then to September ninth at seven PM?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, seconded.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Okay, thank you very much. This matter is continued to September ninth at seven PM. And Jasmine, could you please communicate tomorrow with the applicant, finding out one, where were they, but also notifying them that it's continued to September ninth?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, item number six on our agenda is a public hearing regarding a special permit request for twenty-four Pinecrest Lane. And is anyone on Zoom here for the applicant? If so, please raise your hand.
Oh, Ted Gowdy. There you go. And Jan's here as well. Okay.
Would you like me to continue?
Please.
All right. Hello, my name is Ted Gowdy with Gowdy Group Design Build of Southborough, Massachusetts, and I'm representing Dan Murphy, who's in the audience. Dan and Sasha Murphy, both born and raised here in Ashland, and they've started a family and now have a beautiful daughter. And they currently reside at twenty-four Pinecrest Lane, which is the subject of our hearing tonight. They want to expand the home to accommodate their large, their growing family. They have a mutual need for home offices and the likelihood that one of their parents will come live with them in the near future. So they really like their current location in Ashland, and it's proximity to Boston, proximity to the state parks, where they're located there on Pinecrest, and it's location at the end of a cul-de-sac. Can I go ahead and share my screen?
You may, but may we actually open the public hearing and read the public hearing notice into the record first?
That sounds wonderful. I would like that. Yes, please.
You'd think this was my first rodeo for crying out loud.
My apologies for jumping in and going.
You were too eager, Mr. Gowdy, that's all.
My apologies.
Here's the notice, as it appeared in the Metro West Daily News. The petition is from Dan and Sasha Katz requesting a special permit per Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, and Chapter two eighty-two, Section nine point three, parenthesis, special permits, Section three point three point three, parenthesis, non-conforming structures, and Section three point three point five, parenthesis, non-conforming single and two-family residential structures of the Ashland bylaws. The applicant seeks a special permit to build a partial second-story, a two-story rear addition, a rear deck, an additional garage bay with living space above, and a front and side porch. The building and lot are pre-existing non-conforming. The property in question is located at twenty-four Pinecrest Lane, assessors map twelve, lot thirty-one, in the residential A zoning. Did I do that okay?
Excellent. Thank you. Should be all set to share your screen, Ted.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. I guess for the record, Ted Gowdy, Gowdy Group Design Build of Southborough, Massachusetts. Do I need to repeat my intro, or is once good enough?
Let me just add also for the record that on June third, twenty twenty-five, our building commissioner, Douglas Scott, issued a letter to Sasha Katz indicating that the existing house currently is thirty-three point five feet from the front lot line, making this structure a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and also noting that the plan to add in addition to the house will also encroach into the front yard setback in a deck that will encroach upon the rear yard setback and be three point eight feet from the rear yard setback, and notifying that they have to reply for a special permit from the ZBA, and thus, here you are. Okay, Mr. Gowdy, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Yes, let me go ahead and share my screen. All right. The current home is a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residential, as we've mentioned. The home sits on a lot of fourteen thousand eight hundred fifty-two square feet, while the requirement is thirty thousand square feet. The lot frontage is a hundred and four point two-six feet, while the requirement is a hundred and fifty square feet, and the front setback is thirty-three point five square feet, which would be this, this dimension right here is the current front setback, while the requirement is forty square feet. The current home is a variation of a split level. So you have a garage level, kitchen family room level, and then a bedroom level upstairs. Right now, it's configured with two bedrooms, a study slash office, walk-in closet, and one existing bathroom. The proposed home, so if I can continue. So the proposed home adds a second level over the garage, that's this, as a guest suite. We're increasing the size of the family living room level, that'd be this level here, by expanding to the rear. And then, excuse me, the size of the family living level here is expanding to the side this way and also to the rear. And then the kitchen area is that level is expanding to the rear. Expanding the rear limits the existing rear decks, we're adding a new rear deck. And then the garage, right now, the existing condition is a single, what is in theory a two-car garage, but with modern vehicle sizes, it's really a one-car garage. And so we make it a proper two-car garage with a separate garage doors. We are adding a, to increase the aesthetics and the overall look of the property, the farmer's porch wraps around to the side. And then also, the idea is we're going to have a new four-bedroom septic system. Right now, the septic system sits in this location here. And we confirmed with the engineers that we can upgrade it to a four-bedroom. And hopefully, upon your approval tonight, we'll go ahead and submit those plans to the Board of Health for their approval. So as the chair ran into the record, the building inspector issued us a denial letter and suggested that we need to get a special permit from the Z B A per Section three point three point three for a non-conforming structure. I'm not an expert in your code, but most likely that the relevant code section is three point three point five, non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures. So if we go back to kind of where we're encroaching on the, on the property, you know, so the existing encroachment is here to thirty-three point five feet. And we're adding this front porch, you know, I guess technically here, that also gets us to thirty-three point five feet from the front yard. You know, we're expanding to the right here. And then, you know, we've, we've, we're building over the deck, and so we're adding a deck off the back. One thing that's unique about this property, so there's no or de minimis encroachment on the left-hand side, and there's no encroachment on the right-hand side. One of the things that is unique about this property is the open space back here. This is about eighty feet approximately. I scaled it, I did not, it's not surveyed, dimension of open space to the lots behind us in that direction. And this dimension here is forty to forty-five feet of an open space buffer to the adjacent lot. Overall, we believe that the pros modifications will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood, especially when we consider that the front elevation is in keeping with the neighborhood and with the farmer's porch is an aesthetic improvement. The size and scale of the new home as viewed for the neighborhood will be in keeping with the neighborhood. Farmer's porch is an aesthetic improvement. Mr. Murphy has canvassed the neighborhood with his plan to educate everyone. He knows of at least one letter to the, to the Z B A, maybe through Jasmine, that has been submitted, and he was expecting the three letters of support. Knowing that he spoke with was opposed to the plan. And that concludes my presentation. I'll open any questions.
Okay, well, as we did for the previous hearing, we'll open up with questions from the board members, and then we will open it up to comment from the public. And that being said, unlike the last one where I started the questioning, why don't we turn to Brian? And Brian, do you have questions for Mr. Gowdy?
I don't. It looks like a well-laid-out plan. Normally, the three-foot setback from the rear line would be a concern, but where it's open space behind it and there's space to the neighbors behind them, it doesn't seem like a concern to me.
Okay, any other questions? Or comments? Stu, any questions or comments, or Mr. Gowdy?
Yeah, I have two questions. The word partial is, is used in the description. What does that mean, Mr. Gowdy?
I think I referenced it in terms of adding a, an additional level. What's unique about this house is it's a split level. So you have, you know, it's like basement up half level to here, then here, then here, then here. So this is the only new area that we're going upstairs. We roughly consider this the first floor, this the basement. And so like, this is a, we're calling this a partial second.
Why do you use that word? What does it mean in an architectural point of view?
So I would consider a full second floor would be something like this. And we're not doing that. This roofline right here, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm getting crazy here with my pants jokes. This roofline here is the existing roofline. So all we're adding is this additional, in terms of going up, that's the only area we're adding going up. Most of the addition is going back to the rear.
I see. I thought I heard you say something about their parents.
Yeah, the, the suite upstairs, sorry.
Yes, sir, it's Dan Murphy here. Yeah, unfortunately, my mother fell ill in, in July, and we're working through that currently. There is hope, but I don't know, she might need a lot more care that she can have, living just with her and my father alone right now, so that being the case, the extra space that he just described, that partial second floor would be a suite that would be for them if need be, which is a very good chance.
Well, Mr. Murphy, the, I think the bylaws in, in the town, and correct me, Mr. Chairman, if, if we're constructing what is referred to as a mother-in-law's suite, then there's some additional requirements for that.
It would be no cooking appliances, no laundry, no, not, no type of apartment, really just in a, a bedroom with an attached bathroom is, is what it is.
But there's some requirements for a special entry staircase.
No, Mr. Siegel, you're mistaken, I'm so sorry. It's not the case for, this is not an in-law apartment. This, this doesn't qualify for that. The kitchen would be what would qualify this as an additional living unit, which would be qualified as an A D U, not an in-law apartment. And that would need a second means of egress, but that is actually not required when the person living with you is actually related to you in family. So that, that actually wouldn't hold with this, but since there is no kitchen, this is not an A D U. And this was reviewed by the building commissioner, and he did submit it for a special permit and is aware of the additional unit and does not consider it an A D U.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Anything else, Stu?
Do, do we want to deal with the, the memo from Becca Solomon in terms of?
I was certainly going to, I think we do need to, to deal with it. And I've been trying to determine or decide what might be the best way to deal with it. As Becca's memo has been sent to the applicant so that he knows what we're talking about, or to Mr. Gowdy?
It did not go to Mr. Gowdy, no, I'm so sorry.
Let me just briefly explain, Mr. Gowdy and Mr. Murphy as well. The planning department received a, an email yesterday from Becca Solomon, our conservation agent, concerning the rear property line that abuts apparently land owned by the town. And there was a question concerning the rear fence and whether it was properly, whether it was encroaching upon town land. And frankly, this was the first for us, for me, because I'm not quite sure exactly what, what they're saying. And I think what we need to do, obviously, is to, first of all, this came out to the board, I believe, late yesterday, is to clarify with the conservation department what exactly they're, they're referring to. Obviously, and we have up on it the, the plot plan, the proposed deck, or the, the existing deck goes back, the set line for the rear set line is thirty feet.
The vinyl fence to the right, how it extends beyond the rear lot line is what Becca is referring to from the concert, our conservation agent. How the vinyl fence to the, I mean, the left, I'm sorry, the vinyl fence to the left of the property extends beyond the rear property line into.
So we just learned that ourselves with the surveying. Happy to move the fence if it pleases the board. That fence was built by the previous owners of this home before we bought it, and we did not know it was there, so.
Now, the, the fence that we're talking about, as I'm looking at the, the special permit plot plan, there appears to be a vinyl fence on the right-hand side. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, there's one on the right and one on the left. So you see they both encroach towards the rear.
Okay.
Yeah, that fence was installed, I believe, in twenty sixteen. We purchased the house in twenty twenty, so it was there four years before we moved here, and we did not, we had no idea, so. Happy to move it if it, if it pleases you, no problem.
Okay, I mean, from my perspective, I, I need to clarify with, with conservation what their issue is, because if there's an issue, is that something that they're going to deal with? I'm not sure, as a zoning board, it's not really a zoning, a zoning issue. The proposed deck extending to three point five feet is much closer to the boundary than we typically allow, but Mr. Murphy, can you describe the land that's behind where the proposed deck is?
Sure, it's a, it's a lightly wooded area with really just a lot of pine trees, so I believe that's Boulder Hill Road back there. I can partially see one house if, but since they're pine trees and they don't lose their needles, it's just a nice wooded area, really, just open space and it's just woods, yep, not much to it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's all of eighty feet to, to the next property, I would say, for sure.
Okay.
Do you like me to share an aerial of the existing property where it sits?
If you could, Jasmine, if you have an aerial view, I think that might be helpful. Stu, would that, we're on your question period, so I don't want to interject.
No, that's fine. I didn't realize that nothing is within that fence. If there's something within that fence that you folks use, then I think it would have to be dealt with.
I would agree.
So here is the rear of the property. And here's the next nearest home.
Right.
So yeah, there are trees and then.
What is this?
That area that I just pointed to, can we know what that is?
Do you know what that is, Mr. Gowdy?
This area right there, that's my garden, my vegetable garden.
Well, I hope, I hope the rabbits aren't getting to them too much.
Ground, groundhogs, lots of groundhogs.
Even worse. No offense ground to all you groundhogs out there. Okay. Stu, do you have?
No, I have no further questions, and I, I think the issue can probably be resolved.
I would like to clarify before our next meeting with, with Ms. Solomon, exactly what the concern is. I think I understand it now, and I didn't initially. But I think we can clarify it, and with Mr. Murphy's kind offer to correct it if it be, if it's an issue, I want to just make sure we understand what the issue is so that we can include it as part of a, as part of a
Conditions.
If we may, as a condition, if we make a favorable, a decision, which is obviously on the table. Brian, do you have questions?
I, I, I just have one, and it relates to the proposed rear deck. Is it a, a great issue that led to, to adding a deck there as opposed to just a, a step down to a patio? You know, where that's gonna, I view that as probably the biggest infringement here, where it's only leaving three and a half feet to the setback. It is mitigated by, you know, the wooded area that we're seeing there. But just, you know, from my own edification, wasn't a great issue, or I, I don't see a rear elevation, so can't really see it myself, but.
We were trying to match, it's actually smaller than the existing deck that we do use quite a bit. So we were trying, it, it's actually going to be two feet smaller than what's existing. So it's kind of just what we're used to. And with all that open space back there, I was hoping it really wouldn't be encroaching on anybody's privacy too much, so that's why we designed it that way.
Did you, I mean, do you have any sense of, you know, what the elevation drop would be down to, to grade level? From that exterior back wall?
Yeah, there's three steps.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I had.
I think I, all of my questions have been, have been asked, and Mr. Gowdy and Mr. Murphy have answered them to the best they can tonight. And again, I would like to check with conservation to find out exactly what their concern is, to determine whether it's something that we can address properly in a zoning board of appeals decision. I don't have any questions, any other questions certainly at this point. Again, other than commenting that three point eight feet to that rear property line is much closer than we generally allow a non-conforming use. If there are no further questions from the board, I would open it up to public comment or questions from the public. And in saying that, I would start off by noting that on August twenty-fourth at nine twenty-two A M, the Z B A received an email from Nicole Lee, who indicated she is a neighbor of Dan and Sasha Murphy and is sending the email in support of the proposed plans to expand twenty-four Pinecrest Lane. And then on August twenty-fifth at eight oh, eight A M, the Z B A received an email from Jerome Byrne, who indicates that, quote, "My wife and I reside at twenty Pinecrest Drive, and we have no problem with the Murphys remolding project," I believe he meant remodeling. "They are a young and growing family and can use the room. If we all had neighbors like them, it would be a happy place. Thank you, Jerome and Nancy Byrne." If there is any other public comment, anyone on Zoom that wishes to be heard, please indicate, and Jasmine will enter you into the meeting so that you can stage your piece.
Go ahead, Mark, would you mind introducing yourself, please?
Okay, Mark, sorry, one nineteen main street, thank you. On the plan itself, when it was first shown, that it said the proposed deck and the second that, um, it said the proposed deck and the second level in dark gray frames. My, my question is, what was the original formation of the house when it was, when it was bought? Is it two, one-story, two-story? That's my question.
Ted, uh, being the builder, I'll let you take this one, Ted.
Yeah, let me, uh, let me share my plan again.
Mark, those plans, there are plans for existing elevations and existing floor plans for the Murphy residence and the elevations show, um, all from left elevation, front elevation, rear elevation and right elevation, show the existing, uh, plans of the existing structures that are there. And then there is a proposed elevation of the, for the residence also contained with the plans that are attached to the, uh, application showing front, right, left and rear elevations.
Yeah, but on, on what? What the show, what's showing here? Oh, hi, okay. This is why I'm asking the question, if it's a one-story, two-story, whatever, cause, uh, here's, it's like the thin line, like an out, like a thin line with the, uh, from the, from the two windows from the ground up on the left elevation going up to, to the right side top and, oh, actually, well, what's, what's here now is the, uh, it looks like it's, 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 it is a drawer and I'm just looking at the thin lines with the numbers on top, how they go across. That's added, that's, that's going to be added on. That's why I'm asking the question. What was the original house, first or second floors? Second stories? That's why I'm asking that question.
Through the chair, the original house was this. So we are at, so that's the original house, we're adding this partial second floor and we are adding this element to the right to enable the two separate garage doors rather than a single garage door.
Okay, my last question would be, so, the one that's being added, are they, is there a roof pitch that's going to be put on, that's going to be on top of it?
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Okay. My question is, is the front elevation on, on the top left, where you got the, the pen ink blue squared around it? What's gonna be holding those three windows and the small roof frame, what's gonna be holding that on top, on the bottom? There's a porch and the, the gray looks like a flat roof, gray flat roof, wherever it's gonna be, that's the original house, isn't it?
Yeah, so this, so left elevation, looking from this side here.
Yes.
You have, those windows are in this elevation here, which is above the wall below. So those are in line and then the front, you know, so this farmer porch sticks out in front of that. So, these windows are above these windows.
Then on top of that smaller frame, that's put place on top. That's gonna be the, the room that's gonna be for the parents down the road to have the bedroom in?
Potentially, this is, this room up here is an office. And then behind that, there'll be the fourth bedroom, which is a guest bedroom, potentially where a mother would reside. There's also, so this house is going from a roughly, it's a technically three-bedroom, but it's currently configured as a two-bedroom house and we're going to turn it into a four-bedroom house.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
There is John, yes.
Okay.
Hi, John.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
So this is interesting tonight, I kind of hopped on for the continuance and then, um, got these neat projects. Um, it's my opinion that this is the reason for variance. Like, I think one of the reasons when we set up these bylaws and we set up our zoning, we're trying to protect neighbors from each other. Um, but clearly we want high-value infill. We'd much rather have somebody um, in a harmonious use like this, put money into a home, stay, not tear it down, not scrape it. And, you know, I, I think when we're setting setbacks, obviously not allowing people to impinge on neighbors in, in a very disruptive way, which I don't think he's doing here. The, uh, I think we want to support projects like this. I think there's plenty of people in town that are looking to do things, you know, carefully, thoughtfully like this. Putting money into their homes, uh, and not creating a ton of waste and forcing new development. I mean, people want to stay in town and this is one of the ways we can support people staying in town is allowing them to invest in their homes like this. I mean, can you show the aerial view one more time? When you, cause really, you know, you pointed out and, and the cul-de-sac just create a challenge with setbacks to begin with. Um, most of the time, we're even designing these neighborhoods now, we don't, you're not even putting them in as much anymore. Um, but just my, my opinion, you know, I was, I was looking at the deck, what is it, a butt, even a railroad further up, um, I think it fits very well. Our personal opinion is this exactly, this exactly fits why we even do the variance process. Obviously, we can't, when something doesn't meet the dimensional requirements, we want to kick it to this process, but this is exactly what we want homeowners doing, so it's my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any other public comment? If not, why don't we end the public comment for this evening? What I would like to do is, I would suggest we reschedule this for our next meeting on September ninth uh, at seven PM and in the meantime, I will clarify with the conservation department what the issue that they raised in their email is and whether that is something that we as a zoning board of appeals can deal with. Uh, and Mr. Murphy had indicated a willingness to cooperate with that and, uh, that may suffice it and we can come back on September ninth and, um, make a decision on the matter if that meets with everybody's approval. Brian? We may have lost Brian.
He's still on, but.
Stu? Does that seem okay?
Yes, sir, that's, that, that's fine.
Okay, and Ryan?
Absolutely makes sense to me as well.
Okay, and one last attempt for Brian. Well, I'm gonna need a motion to continue the matter then to September ninth at seven PM. Brian seems to have dropped off, he was having, uh, Zoom connection problems, so he, that may be the issue. Uh, Stu or Ryan, would you like to make that motion?
Go ahead, Stu.
And Stu, would you like to second it?
Sure.
Okay. Aye, John Trefethan vote in favor. Okay, Brian's not with us, but Ryan and then Stu, or Stu and then Ryan?
Aye, Stuart Siegel vote in favor.
Thank you, Stu.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Gowdy, Mr. Murphy, we will continue the matter until September ninth, we'll get everything straightened out and we'll have a decision made on that date.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
That concludes our public hearings for the evening, but we staff still have a few uh, administrative matters. We have a draft decision for the one sixty-seven, one sixty-nine Pleasant Street special permit request. You will recall that this hearing decision, uh, was before us at our last hearing, but the, uh, due to some email issues, not everybody had seen the, a decision. We had previously voted uh, to deny the special permit request with Brian Forstall, myself and our associate member at the time, Daniel May, uh, voting, uh, to deny the, uh, decis, uh, the request for special permit. Uh, it's before us tonight to sign, uh, in the interim. Unfortunately, uh, Daniel May, um, has resigned from the committee and is thus unable to sign the, uh, sign the decision. Uh, what we're going to do, because the, he was a member of, when he voted to deny the uh, special permit request, I'm going to sign the special permit decision tonight. Uh, Brian can sign it when he, uh, returns to, uh, to town hall and we will consult with town council on whether Stu or Ryan, uh, both of whom had participated in the hearing, uh, can sign, can sign the hearing decision. Is that what we need to do, Jasmine?
Yes.
Okay. Is that clear to everybody? Unfortunately, it was, it's an unusual circumstance, but it's what we need to do.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next item is the, the meeting minutes for the August twelfth meeting. Uh, they were contained in the package that came out, uh, for our August twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Jasmine, did you receive any comments or suggested changes from any board members?
I did not.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, Stu.
Okay, uh, in, in, in that, um, in those minutes, it calls for the continuance of sixty-one Waverly to August twenty-sixth and the vote was five to zero, but we only had four yays. There needs to be a yay at the end of Mr. Sullivan's name.
Oh, okay. Well, certainly, we all did vote to continue the matter, so you're right, it should, it should be consistent for all of us.
I, I think it's a typo, they just forgot to write yay next to Mr. Sullivan's name.
You're absolutely correct. On the top of page seven, Jasmine, where we have the list, where the motion and listed of the five members and the votes, uh, we have Mr. Sullivan, but there needs to be a colon and the word I added. Thank you for pointing that out, Stu.
You're welcome.
Um, as amended, is there a motion to approve the minutes for August twelfth, twenty twenty-five as amended?
I move.
Seconded. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, aye, John Trefethan vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan vote in favor.
Excellent, that concludes that. But, and item number nine, staff updates and administrative matters. Jasmine, anything to report?
My only two reports are obviously that Daniel May has left us and have the open associate position, um, available if anybody is interested. And also that, um, Mr. Siegel had noticed a discrepancy in a June fourth letter from Haley Ward on ten to sixty Main Street that didn't have a correct gallons per day. It had one nine zero comma four zeros, so we've just reached out to Haley Ward for clarification if it's one million nine hundred thousand gallons per day or a hundred ninety thousand gallons per day. I haven't heard back from them yet, Stu, but I'll.
And the only thing I have to add is that, um, the, uh, select board last week have reappointed me to a three-year term on the board commencing September first and I believe also appointed Stuart Siegel and Brian Sullivan to, uh, one-year terms, uh, again, starting September first. Our next meeting will be September ninth, uh, so that we all will need to uh, do the duties that Ms. Roby indicated in her appointment letter, uh, with the town clerk, signing in with the town clerk and filling out some forms. Uh, because if, if three of us don't do that, we won't be able to participate at the September ninth meeting. And Brian, you did receive your notice of reappointment?
I did, yes, and, and I should be able to get it in tomorrow.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine. Um, and the only other thing is that the first item on our agenda for the September ninth meeting will be the election of officers for our new year. The ZBA year starts on September first when, uh, we have our appointments and the, uh, bylaws require there to be uh, an election to choose a chair and a vice chair. So that will be item number one on the agenda. Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
Right, do I hear a motion to adjourn? I think I do somewhere out there in the, uh.
So moved. I second that.
Excellent, aye, John Trefethan vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you very much, everybody. And thank you for your patience with me this evening as we had a somewhat rocky meeting from time to time. And WACA and Matt, thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.